Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, it is now six oh five. We now like to call a regular meeting of the South County Council for two to three equal to double order. This being the reason, give us an indication. May we all stand, please, and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Our kind heavenly Father, we do acknowledge you as the one in whom we live, move, and have our being. We thank you for bringing us together again to serve as a county council, to represent the people that elected us. As we begin our meeting, we ask that you enter our presence and help us to fill your presence as we go through our agenda on items. We ask your blessings upon everyone under this silent my voice, and we do acknowledge this season, we just celebrated Easter, and we acknowledge that, and thank you for the sacrifice that was made to give us a reason to celebrate. And as we go through all the items, we ask that you give us peace, give us understanding, clarity of mind, and wisdom to make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. These are all blessings we thank and ask in the precious name of your son and our saintly Jesus Christ. Amen.
This evening, our pledge of allegiance will be led by U.S. Air Force veteran Charles P. Sexton. He served our country from March nineteen sixty-three to March nineteen sixty-seven. He is past commander of American Legion Post fifteen here in Sumter, current of the Gibson County Council District Three. Thank you for your service. Thank you for inviting me to report.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Brown, your idea change, the gentleman?
I have said yes.
Have a motion to approve, the gentleman? Move to approve, second, have approved the agenda in the discussion. Hearing none in favor, approve it tonight, the gentleman, please say aye. General, it's approved. Have a motion to approve our minutes for our regular meeting. Second, move to approve, second, in the discussion. Hearing none in favor, approve in our minutes, please say aye. Our minutes are approved. Land use matters, Ms. Ruden.
Bear with us for a moment while the PT are locked in. Maybe. Our first request this evening is RZ twenty-three oh three at thirty-seven twenty Broad Street. The applicant is Christine Poker, who is authorized to issue to the property owner Charles Hodge. This is a request to rezone a portion of a larger property, approximately point, uh, eight one acre piece, a large one point five nine acre piece, from general residential to general commercial. This is the entirety of the tract of property in question, but as you see, uh, the southern part of the property, that point one acre, uh, one acre portion, is currently zoned general residential. This request is actually to bring the subject area into the general commercial zoning district in alignment with the remainder of the property. The property as it stands today is actually heavily littered and is currently undeveloped. It is actually sandwiched between two commercially zoned properties that each actually have a home on them. This doesn't actually impact any setbacks to development standards on the subject property. It simply impacts buffering requirements at time of development. This is how the property looked in August of twenty-twenty-two from Bucol Street. It still looks much the same way. One of the things that that we thought was worth mentioning is that the southern end of that property is fairly close to an area of wetlands, so although there is general residential zoning on that parcel due south of this, which does impact setbacks in development standards, the fact of the matter is it's a very wet property and it's not practical for development, because although it has a GR zoning designation, there isn't sewer available because it's outside of the city limits, so the density entitlement, although it's there from a practicality standpoint, would never actually develop for residential purposes at a six thousand square foot lot development standard. When we look at rezoning requests, we look at comprehensive plan designations. In this particular instance, the property is within the military protection planning area. As a matter of policy, the MPA is supportive of removing zoning designations that create an entitlement for dense residential development, so in this instance, rezoning from general residential, which is one of our most intense residential zoning districts, to general commercial is in alignment with comprehensive plan. Planning Commission did recommend approval of this request. We do find that it's in alignment with comprehensive land use plan, although changing from GR to GC may have impact on future development on that property. The adjacent land in that area, uh, really from a practicality standpoint, won't hold residential development in the future. I'm happy to answer any questions you should may have.
Move to approve, first reading. Second, move to approve, second agenda. First reading of RZ twenty, twenty, twenty-three pokering. Any discussion? Hearing none in favor? Uh, RZ twenty-three oh one, moving before you proceed. I would like to remind council and the general public that a public hearing on this rezoning request was held at our last meeting on March twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three, so there will be no public hearing tonight, even though this is a Saturday.
RZ twenty-three oh one at thirty-two twenty-one Camden Highway is being brought forward by the property owner, Mr. Christopher Raffield. He is here to answer any questions, as is his representative. This is a modified request from what you saw at the last meeting. The original request, it was rezoned approximately twenty acres from R nine to agricultural conservation. I met with Mr. Raffield the Monday following the meeting, uh, with him and his legal representatives, and the request was modified to pare it down to a total of three acres, a three acre home site, and then a one acre portion of the larger tract that suggests to the east of the driveway. This map is representative of what that three acre area looks like. As I go through this presentation, you'll see some maps from the previous presentation because I didn't redo them, but these site maps are representative. This is the property in question, uh, this area that you see, um, I'll highlight for Right in here, dimensions at approximately one acre. If this rezoning is successful, Mr. Raffield would have to have a new plat drawn up, creating that one acre tract from that larger tract. As you can see today, it is currently zoned R nine. The request is to allow replacement of a manufactured home on the property, which, as you may remember, is not allowed in the R nine district. So in this instance, Mr. Raffield is requesting this rezoning of the minimum amount of land to rezon the original two acre home site, so that the existing house in that property can remain, and then a one acre site from the larger tract, so that he would have a one acre parcel, which meets minimum AC standards as a standalone lot, so that he can put a new home on the property. This is a part of a larger area of R nine zoning, but it's also within the comprehensive land use plan designation of the military protection planning area. So the zoning in this area is actually a contraindication to what the comp plan policy area would rather envision, that that prelates our current policy standards. The other thing is that this property, although it's in proximity to water, doesn't have sewers, so it would have to be served by septic tank. That one acre piece of property is large enough, under most dehect standards, to accommodate a septic tank, under optimum soil condition, twenty-two thousand five hundred square feet is generally what's required for dwelling a septic tank in a fifty percent repair area. This is almost twice the size of what's required. Additionally, there is some national of letdowns inventory property, as you can see here, that influences that larger acreage tract. Although it would make sense from an interior standpoint for Mr. Raffield to ask to rezon this portion of the property, the reason that he is requesting this acre right here is because in two thousand and fifteen, when we had a large flood, this piece of property and then much of what you see here was underwater, but this one acre site and its home sites stayed dry, so he's selecting this location because he believes that it is an optimum location to prevent having damage if there's a future flooding event. This is further supported by the soils map that you see in the area. This is a loamy soil. It's a kind of a Carolina bay. It's not large enough to be mapped as a floodplain, but technically has the characteristics of an isolated floodplain. You also see some of that over here, so this is one of the higher areas. As I previously mentioned, in the comprehensive plan, it is designated military protection planning area. Rezoning the agricultural from R nine is supported in alignment with the comp plan. And then this kind of puts you in a larger perspective of where the MPA ends in the area. Planning Commission does continue to recommend approval of this request. This reduction is from the initial area that you saw, the twenty acres to three acres, which is the minimum amount of land necessary to accomplish what Mr. Raffield's trying to do whilst fulfilling compliance with our regulations. I'm happy to answer any questions you should may have.
Any questions? I got one. Um, the two acres.
Yes, sir.
As long as that house sits on, he can't put anything back there.
He cannot put another dwelling on that property as long as that house is there.
Unless he tears the house down.
Unless he tears the house down. I did talk to one of my colleagues who is responsible for a lot of demolitions in the community, for contacting them. He said conservative estimates, four to five dollars a square foot to tear that house down based on its size, uh, because it would be a one-off sub. He would estimate it would be between eight and ten thousand dollars to have that done.
I move to second. Uh, will we all third? No, second. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. The amended, amended, the amended three acres. Motion and a second to approve RZ twenty-three oh one. Any discussion? Hearing none in favor, please say aye. Second reading, RZ twenty-three oh one is approved. Thank you, Ms. Ruden. Mr. Bryant, ordinance twenty-three nine eighty-six.
Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Castle, orders twenty-nine eighty-six is in orders to approve two agreements with a new project, and this project is Ignis, Ted Fish's name, of course, uh, because the, uh, the company self must remain anonymous until we get closer to the third reading or they have an announcement. But the whole project will be sixty-five million, uh, sixty-five point nine million total investment, of which thirty-six and a half will be new equipment and machinery, and then twenty-five point three million will be, uh, investment in renovation of an existing building. They're going to go into an existing building, which is going to prove yourself to absorb taxes, so the building part will not qualify for a fee of the tax agreement, so what you have will be two agreements. The end of the tax agreement, which will apply to the new equipment and machinery, will be a thirty-year agreement, sixty percent assessment ratio, the beginning level should be a current level, which expires on the June the thirtieth of this year, and the middle will adjust every five years. You've seen these conditions previously. But then there'll be a separate agreement that applies to real property, and they're going to, as I said, invest twenty-seven point three million in the real property, and there'll be a forty point, uh, forty percent special source revenue credit on that investment for five years, and thirty percent on the next five years. But then I can get dollar for dollar on that. Special source revenue credits can apply only to the difference between the existing taxation and the new taxation that will occur after the investment. Then I can get special revenue credit on the whole tax amount, just the additional tax amount. We think the increase in the building, even though they're going to invest twenty point four three million, will be only about three million in assessment, not even increase. There are callbacks in both SSRCs and the FLO agreement and in this special special source revenue agreement, if the company does a deed, personal property, investment commitment, real property investments commitment, or jobs commitment. And they plan to create three hundred new jobs, uh, about twenty-five dollars an hour, about fifty-one million, fifty-one thousand dollars a year for those workers on average, which brings about sixty-six million dollars in the first five years. That's an outline of the two agreements. I'll be glad to hear any questions you may have.
Any questions, Ms. Bryant? Move to approve. Second. We have a motion and a second to approve, ordinance number twenty-three nine eighty-six. Any discussion? Hearing none in favor, please say aye. Coming down to committee reports, land use matters, Ms. Ruden, and you committed that fourth point down the south. And we discussed, uh, regulations basically for solar development, not just solar power for residential use, and having effect on that, where the county might want to go and look towards regulations and its own, uh, aspects of solar development that may become in South County. And so at this point, we can take any action, we just continue discussion among ourselves, committee members, and the, uh, planning commission. Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Public safety committee meeting, Mr. Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have two items on our agenda today. The first item included a accreditation program that's being instituted at the state level, that some kind sheriff's office will participate in. There is a state accreditation program and a national program. We expect our sheriff's office to go through the state program and make some decision about, uh, the national program at a later day. The other item that we discussed involved the South County Detention Center and its increased usage by inmates. I think our total is over four hundred and a half, which is a really big jump from, I guess, two hundred and fifty, um, some short time ago. So we're monitoring that scenario, um, also the staff levels and so forth, but there was no action, uh, taken at this time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate this my report.
Thank you, Mr. Washington. Report from council members on other meetings, trainings, and all conferences.
Chairman. I just, thank you. It was a pleasure to advise council members and the public that on next Tuesday, from five to seven, there will be a community walkthrough at the FJ Delane Elementary School. It will be led by our superintendent, Dr. William Wright. Those of you that may be in District One, council members that would like to attend, or the general public, you're welcome to do so. It will start promptly at five, and the notice is almost great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? I think not many reports, Mrs. Bryant.
Yes, sir. In your packet is the information I just pulled on the avenue. Also, on tomorrow, Morris College will have its twenty-twenty-three charter day, and the mayor's prayer breakfast is coming up. Then council members, interested in attending. And additionally, the, um, Dr. Mary McCloud, who led the sick vessel, will be held May nineteenth through the twenty-first, and there's several other things that will be coming up, but I'll give them to you all at a later date. Thank you.
Ms. County Members, please report.
Mr. Chairman, uh, council members, good evening. A couple of quick items first. I'd like to remind council that we are in the budget process with our county general fund, and we will have planned, we have planned, the first meeting on April twenty-fifth at County Council, which is our next meeting date. Uh, there will be a workshop proposed earlier that afternoon. We'll get out the information on that as soon as we can, but that will basically be an opportunity to introduce the budget picture as a starting point, knowing that we have numerous planned budget workshops for the next month and a half to balance the county budget. I just want to remind council of that. And the second item I wanted to cover, uh, again, the conversation about litter, uh, we are in full swing of our quadrant cleanup. Uh, as you know, we had our grand opening at Civic Center. I'd like to take this opportunity to publicly thank Shelby Goldin from the item for the wonderful, uh, friend that was in this past Saturday. I think they did a wonderful job explaining that, particularly the first week's effort with the schools, and the wonderful, uh, comment in there by our superintendent and the school's involvement, so exactly what we were looking for is trying to get the word out that we are working this entire month of people on a number of different fronts. Uh, the next one, I believe, will be on law enforcement, and I believe you have scheduled a ride with our litter officer this week, maybe tomorrow. Uh, so a good opportunity for, again, Shelby to get out and see some of the stuff that we're doing, and then report back, and, uh, I assume it's going to be every Saturday for the next three Saturdays. So look forward to that. Again, thank you for that coverage. We've had a lot of positive comments, at least I have, from the community. Uh, it's a good opportunity for us to show, but again, show off what all of it done. We also have planned the county employee pickup for April the twenty-first. We'll get that information out to our council members, uh, for those that would like to participate, uh, with us on April the twenty-first. Us on Friday morning, we'll get out and pick up some trash somewhere in quadrant, um, number two. I'm not sure, our public works director will decide that location for us. The last thing we want to talk about, I'd like to introduce Joe Perry, our communication director for the county, who has, uh, put together for us, uh, I believe, a small video of one of the school presentations at Manchester Elementary, and then we'll close with that. Joe, you'd like to introduce her, and say whatever you want, because you actually participated in that day, something you experienced. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, uh, Ms. Maria Dantzler, principal of Manchester, was very gracious to have myself, Mr. Johnny McCloud, since the public works director, and Lieutenant McCoy, our control officer, and, uh, and Ms. Shelby Golden Marin. And, uh, what a great time. It was a wonderful reception. We had a little program to talk about litter and, uh, shot a little, did a little video about it.
Hello, welcome to Manchester Elementary School, home of the Panthers. I'm Maria Dantzler, the principal here. First, I would like to say we are so excited to be a part of the Stash the Trash Initiative in Sumter County. Yes, we want to make sure everyone knows the importance of keeping our community litter free. We are so excited. Our students are working hard. We've been a part of our contest, and we, um, taking part in events in our county, making sure that our students know the importance of keeping our community safe and free of litter. Again, we are excited to be a part of the Stash the Trash campaign. Thank you.
One, two, three.
Panthers! 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 Panthers!
I think we might need to get some more Stash the Trash frisbees, so we can get very popular. But also to add real quick, um, Lieutenant McCoy and Mr. Glenn Byt, city control officer, legal officer, were at the State House on April fourth, I believe it was. I'm going to probably have a big litter kickoff for the spring season, but I see law enforcement officer there, and they got to speak our lieutenant governor briefly, so that was a nice event, well attended, and that's a good meeting, however.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for all you do.
Yes, sir.
We come down to the public comment portion of our agenda, which is desiring to speak to council. Limits no more than three minutes comments to be made to the chairman. And now declare the public comment portion of our agenda open. Anyone wishing to speak to council, please proceed to appoint station name.
My name is Jody Raffield. How are y'all this evening? I don't understand what just took place with the vote for Chris Raffield. Um, I'm totally confused. Um, from what I understand, you may have set you not how many acres for him? Was it three? Two? Three? So did I hear you right at the last meeting? You said you have one residence per acre.
One dwelling per parcel of land.
Okay, so, and the house is going to stay.
That is my understanding.
Okay. That's going to be a dangerous house. You don't have somebody to go in there that's going to fall through the floor, if not the right on roof collapse on them, or it's going to catch on fire and end up burning all the woods, including our home and other homes in that area that wooded around it. I mean, bottom line, if he wants to take the house down, the house should be taken down, instead of letting mother nature take its course. We have enough problems out in the county without seeing the eyes sore like that. It's bad enough with the way it looks up there now, because it took him less than twenty years to make a mess up there. If you go out there and look at the property, it is one hot mess with trash all over the place and stuff all in the yard. So God knows what that's going to look like and with a trailer on the property in five or six years. But I really think the house needs to be taken down if he does not want to repair it so where nobody will get hurt or possibly killed.
Thank you, Chairman. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Sue Vasquez. This is for y'all. I don't know how to get to you. Um, anyway, this is in reference, I tried to come to the last meeting, but I couldn't, and I talked to Mr. Archie Baker. And, um, hi, I'm Sue Vasquez. I talked to you. Right. About making a law about the dog. Well, I went back to ASPCA, and there is a law. So I bought y'all a copy, and I made little notes around and said, y'all can see that it's a law. I went to the ASPCA three times. They called the sheriff's office. They went out there. They didn't do anything. I went to the sheriff's office. I talked to the sheriff's office. They gave me the number to animal control. I called them last Monday. They said they'd take care of it. I was over there this morning looking at the dog, and it has not been taken care of. It is a law. He's got an ankle chain, like a type of boot, around his neck. And I don't know if I'm in the right place to enforce these laws. I don't know where to go next, but I've been, like I say, three places, and now I'm talking to you. So what's my next move?
Talk three after the meeting.
Oh, okay. Can you?
Excuse, thank you, Ms. Bryant.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, ladies.
I reside on, um, twenty-four fifty-seven Camden Highway, and I've been there for eighteen years, and I've been asking for city water ever since.
Good night, please, ma'am.
Diane Butler. I've been asking for water for eighteen years, city water. They have built new complexes all around. Everybody has water except for five homes over there. I'm directly across the street from Four Bridges. When I approached it before, I was told that if I paid them two thousand dollars, that they would bring the water across from me so I can get a meter. I don't think it's fair, and I mean, they're building new homes, in fact, now up the block. We have Morning Star up there, and then now they're building more, and we still can't get the city water, and they say they need revenue, and we can't get the water. Sometime I'm without water there because the ponds and stuff, the things are so low, we go a day or two without water. And I'm just asking, did someone please check into that? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant.
Captain, this is my first time here, Chairman. I hear complaints about, um, I have a handy fat husband. I live on Four Bridges Road across the street from Diane, and I have more problems happening there, wet, young children, young people up and down the highway of the Four Bridges Road, where I barely sleep at night sometimes, and I have the lights. They have, um, by Ebenezer, they have one of those streetlights, and I requested hope and praying that I get a light on Four Bridges Road there, so we can get some kind of light in the area, because the street housing in that area there, where I live at, and I have more people in my yard and on the side of my house wrecked all the time, for short time, young people, middle ages, and I don't sleep at night because I'm afraid of the dark out there in the yard. And I don't, I have a towel light out there, and I don't want to put another one on the corner, because I got to pay for that, and I don't think it's... And I don't think it's, to me, fair paying for another light on that area there by the stoplight on the Four Bridges and where I live there. So I'm here complaining, so can I get a streetlight on that corner? So I can see people knocking at my door at night saying I need to use the phone, or I mean, I accident wrecked the lady next door to me. She, her daughter was in accident, stuck in the car across the street from Diane and I. And it was like an hour she couldn't get out, and that's been going on for some time. And we're getting tired of it. I am getting tired of it, because I wrecked it on the curb. Helicopters sometimes land, picking the people up out of my yard, taking them to the hospital. So I don't have any lights out there on that, because Ebenezer Road has one, Roentgen Road has one. Then my district curve right there on the curb, I should get elected so I can see. People coming in my yard at night, late at night. Young people up and down the Four Bridges Road, late at night, can't sleep, music high. And I don't know what they're doing there. I always call nine-one-one, they know me, I call nine-one-one, they come out here. That's all I have to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can I address that?
Apple Durant.
Ms. Durant?
Yes.
Just, all we got to do is make a request, and then we got a criteria that...
Okay.
Is it a bus stop there by the turn?
Yes, it's a bus.
That's a big plus for you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Durant.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name's Brian Davis, I'm just the council, last council meeting about the rezoning on Camden Highway. I don't think all the facts were presented, and what was presented was not totally true and factual. Two weeks ago, you know, Mr. Raffield's attorney said that you couldn't see the house from the road. Google Earth Street View can see it from the road. I can see the house from the road. It's white siding with gray shingles and a silver tarp on the roof. There is also, I believe, well, let me, let me just read. Back in 2015, the Shire Force Base Boy Scout Troop helped Mr. Raffield at his property, and the all-god's-creatures deserve to live non-cherub a host. We delivered mulch, procured donated lumber, built steps, and a ramp at a mobile home by the house. Removed, burnt, removed and burnt lots of brush, trees, and debris from around his house, the mobile home, and dog pen areas. We also built a fence, the privacy of business that's there, and removed several trailer loads of debris from the property. The Boy Scouts had to stop this terrible work. When Mr. Raffield was arrested for sixty marijuana plants on his property worth over a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars at the time. Two weeks ago, we stated that the community was concerned about mobile homes and drugs and things like that. There's already mobile home on property, there's already been drugs on property. I believe that the mobile home that was there back in 2015 is still there. You can see it from the street, you can see a little yellow portion of it. And the Scouts also accomplished electrical work and plumbing repair in that mobile home. Now, if there's only one plumbing allowed on the property, there are currently two. You just rezoned to a three-acre plot, and now there will be three on that three-acre plot. I just think that all the investigation and all the fact-finding was not done prior to a vote. Three homes on three acres, clearly a violation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Chairman, can you have one more vote on this? Yeah. Start with me. Anyone else wish to address council?
Hey, good evening. My name is Amber Boucher. I think the dots were connected at last meeting in that I am Mr. Raffield's niece by marriage. I do have a question, Mr. Chairman, if I can direct that towards Councilmember Charles Eaton's. From my understanding, Mr. Raffield hired you to sell a family member's home a couple months ago. And so I'm wondering if he sought out your professional knowledge or experience about placing a mobile home in a zoning that is prohibited?
You can talk to her. Yeah, okay. You'll talk to her.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher.
Hi, my name is Connie Brown. I'm following from the last meeting of Mr. Carlton about my road. We have the pictures on the road. It was Saturday when I buried my mom, and traffic was coming through. And, you know, the road is horrible, I need some help with the road. I just hope to go over, follow through with Mr. Washington to help me get my road fixed. And I have a letter from my neighbor, Mommy Reed. To whom we may concern, I'm Tiffy Calvin, who resides at fifty-four Alabama Lane, Birmingham, South Carolina. Along with my children, the reason for this better is to reach out for some type of help with getting my driveway and the public road fixed. Alabama Lane is a dirt road out in the country area of Birmingham, whereas they have a problem with getting in and out to our homes. My children have issues with catching the bus on time certain days because of the excess water buildup during and after it rains on the road. It's hard coming in and out from my house, got getting bogged down or stuck in multiple of potholes and mud gets caused to mess up my vehicle and others. Children clothes wet because of walking through the cooler water just to get home from the bus stop. I'm writing this letter asking for some assistance on fixing, in fixing our road where we can ride and drive more safely. Thank you. I wasn't at the last meeting, but as Mr. Carlton was saying, the road is terrible, I just need some help fixing. If there was an emergency backup in there. It was one time I had to call police back there, they couldn't get to, they had to go back and wait till it go down and come in a truck. So if the ambulance needed to get to me or my family, they wouldn't be able to get on this daily, please for help to get my road fixed.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Hi, Heather, hi, I was in Alabama. I'm waiting for me some drugs to my cousin.
Your name, please, ma'am.
So I ran the ropes and hunter. Okay, her road is terrible. I mean, I never seen anything like, you go back there, I have got bogged down four times, four times. With my dealer. It happened last weekend when they have Eric and mother trying to go through, and I need everybody. When I say everybody, everybody got bogged down. And a lot of the time, the members didn't want to come because they knew how the road is. That's sad. I mean, that's really sad. So, I mean, everybody had to get pulled out. They even had a tow truck to come. He got bogged down. They had to dig him out. So something, I really appreciate that they would take into consideration. Some, several people go out and look at it and just see just how bad it is. I didn't come on it. And I often come, and I have to kind of maneuver, have to go through the road for some or other, I still get stuck. So I don't see why, you know, it's a county that want to take a look at to see what can be done. I'm quite sure everyone here lives on a nice road, regardless of what the house rule is. You take taxi, you want to be able to go in and out your home. You want to be able to get back there. When her mother, before she was down here visiting the PC, you can call the ambulance down last day and get back there. Now that's unhappening, that's very unhappy. That's a disgrace. And I really would appreciate it if, if, say, whether you have to go out there to take a look, you would really would appreciate it. If you can't pave it, something can be done, it could be straight or something. So I really would appreciate it, I really, really would appreciate it, so I'll take consideration to go take a look at. Because people shouldn't have to live like that, we pay taxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brenda Williams. I'm representing the Family Unit Incorporated, five-on-one, C-Three, not profit organization. I've been here before, and we appreciate the attention that the Sumter County Council has given to our families. One thing I wanted to mention was that the food desert that is located in the Hickory Hollow and Spring Hollow and Walnut Hill areas in Sumter County, that area, those areas are getting some attention, thank goodness, from the RITA. Most recently, there had been a study done. The study was done by the Seven Days Adventist Church members. We were very impressed and very happy to see the church members actually go out to the community and do a survey, asking the people in the community, how are they getting back and forth to buy things, like toilet tissue and dishwashing liquid. And there are some buses, I understand, that are making a route through those areas, which is a food desert, letting people from that desert into the city of Sumter and Sumter County to buy groceries and to just regular things, and that is so very, very good. We're still asking for the Sumter County Council and the Sumter City Council to help that area. There's one store there, a variety store that sells health food, and just little things that households need. One store serving at least three thousand people. We're asking the county council at least, first I said fifteen thousand dollars a year. I'm bringing it on down to at least five thousand dollars a year for that store. The young lady has been here before, who runs the store. They're very efficient, very efficient on bookkeeping, the store is run, they have a clientele. Those folks in the community can't walk there because there's no sidewalk. So the people that come to that store and drive, it's a very good store. So we're asking the council to reach down into your hoppers at least five thousand dollars a year for that store. You'll get the bookkeeping records annually. That's all we're asking for. God bless you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Waffen. I'm speaking in reference to the Camden Highway rezoning. I had a question that kind of came up, I thought about earlier when something else was brought up, but is it not part of the rezoning commission's duty to go out and inspect the property prior to agreeing and proposing to rezone? So they, like, to build on your property, you have to have a permit, and they have an inspector come out to see if it's viable, correct? So why doesn't the rezoning commission do the same thing? If you're a staff member, that means with the applicant who goes to the site and can double. Then how did the zoning commission not know that the house was viewable from the road?
I never made the contention that it wasn't viewable from the road.
Okay, can I ask a secondary question? Okay. Also, I believe you said earlier that to tear the house down was eight to ten grand? Is that correct?
That's what we said.
Why is that not feasible if the applicant was able to come and have trees removed and everything else and dirt dropped?
Thank you, Ms. Washington. Anyone else wish to address council? And I declare the public comment portion of our meeting to be over. And we hope you do a dinner. Other words out. We will promptly accept that you adjourned the next session. You adjourned.